Okay, I think we're all here that are that are going to be here. I'm gonna go ahead and start the recording for you.
Recording in progress.
Great, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 2nd, 2022 Board of County Commissioners, Wasco County Board of Commissioners meeting. Uh, let's see, I believe we do have in addition to the agenda, Kathy, can you guide us through that?
We do. I'd like to add to the discussion list, a letter of support for a district, a school district grant application. Kara Flapp is here. She is their CFO. And she'll explain to you what the grant is and what she's asking for.
Okay. Anything else, commissioners? No? Steve? Okay, no? All right, all right. Well, why don't we go ahead and start with that addition? So where is Ms. Flapp? Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Kathy, do we have the letter in our in our email or anything yet, or?
We don't. This request just came in late yesterday, and so my hope is that Kara can explain to you what it is they're applying for and what the letter is going to be about, and then you can approve it in concept by consensus, and then I will work with Kara to get a letter drafted for your signature.
Okay, is that satisfactory, commissioners? Ah, did we lose Scott?
We may have lost Scott.
Yeah.
He looks frozen, even though it's a rainy day, it shouldn't be cold up there, but he's frozen.
It's actually a black screen for me. I don't even see him frozen.
I'm sure he's trying to log back in.
Okay, let's give him a second. We are, we are soon to be hopefully done with this Zoom, so. Well, the internet gods are not working for Scott this morning.
I'm back.
Ah, you're there, okay.
Just no video.
Are you gonna stay off video, Scott, maybe to keep your connection?
I can't. It's not usually a low speed, it's just a no speed.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. Ms. Flapp, do you want to go right ahead now and explain your request? Thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for your time. Yes. Yesterday, I had sent out a request, um, just looking for letters of support. The school district's looking at applying for a Safe Routes to Schools education grant. And the purpose would be to hire a Safe Routes to School coordinator position that would work in collaboration with both the city and the county to work with parents, community members, families, and the school district staff to find better ways to educate the public on, there are some routes to schools that are a little more problematic than others, so we've been working with ALTA planning, and we have a Safe Routes to School suggestion list that I think the county may have, I don't know if the county commissioners have it, and I can send it over, that has some recommendations, primarily the two areas that seem to be most problematic is Channawith and Colonel Wright, which is specifically Trevitt Street. So we have been working on those two plans, but in collaboration with that, you know, some things we've discussed is there are other alternative ways that parents can drop off students, and of course, getting students to walk to school, and then attempting to add more bus routes, which will require some coordination with the county, I believe, especially going up by Foley Lakes, but sidebar. So we're, what I'd like to do is apply for this grant, which gives us up to $100,000 to $150,000 to hire a position, and a letter of support from the county would be helpful. In addition, if the county had any resources or financial, we're not expecting a financial commitment, but maybe in the letter, if it could reference that your, you know, your staff are willing to work with our Safe Routes to School grant coordinator that we would hire to find alternative routes within the county and asking the same thing of the city, and they've been working with us hand in hand on our planning grant. So just looking for, hey, the county supports the school districts hiring this coordinator, we think it would be a good, a good position to have. I don't have all the specific details lined out for exactly what the coordinator position would do, but it has a heavy lift ahead in the plant, the grant would also have some built-in planning time to figure out strategically what would be the best way to go about implementing a Safe Routes to School coordinator and where we can be most effective. So just looking for a general letter of support, hey, the county's on board with District 21 hiring as a routes to school coordinator. We think it's important, we think it would benefit the community and the school, and that kind of information, but I don't have a letter prepared yet or suggested.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I have a quick question. Um, so great, I, I, I think Safe Routes to School is awesome. I think North, uh, the pub, the Public Health District was somehow involved in some things in the past, so I know there's been a fair amount of activity happening in this, in this world for a while, so that's good. My question would be, so is this, are you thinking as the school district that this is kind of a temporary position that you would bring on, they would do this project essentially, and then they would basically move on to something else, or is this, are you thinking this would be a permanent project? I'm thinking of it in context of like, if it was somebody at the county, we're always, when we think about grants and grants that hire people, our biggest, my big, one of my biggest concerns is how are we gonna fund that position after the grant runs out?
Nope, and you are definitely correct, because that is the thing you have to worry about. They do have ongoing grants that there are school districts across the state that continue to fund Safe Routes to School coordinator positions through through this funding program, so my intent would be to leverage those dollars to the maximum capacity, and then if it, in a few, I am thinking in a year or two into it, we would see the effectiveness and the impact that could have, and we would wanna continue that. Of course, I can't speak future focus, because it's all depending on how the state funds schools, right? So that's always a concern of financial people, but I think we have to use opportunities where we can. So my hope would be this would be an ongoing position that would continually work on it. I know we have a lot of things we can do, and we have a lot of projects that a person like this could work on in collaboration with the county, but you're right, sustainability is always a concern, and I wouldn't ever wanna hire a position and with the intention of only keeping it temporary, because it doesn't have the buy-in that way. And it doesn't effectively get off the ground until you're into something at least two years, in my opinion. So my intention would be to continue this program as long as possible, contingent on all the funding, of course.
Excellent, yeah, no, I, I think it's a great idea, and I totally support it. I mean, if I could be of some help, you know, as a commissioner, I'd certainly be happy to, to participate and help if possible as well.
Great. Anything else, Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, go along with Commissioner Heggie's thoughts on that sustainability of, of staff is very, very important as we move into some uncertain years, as we, I think that we all need to take stock in. And so is this, is this time sensitive? I'm sorry, I didn't catch that at the beginning of the presentation.
This grant application is due March 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, I'm, of course, in favor as well. I'll really look forward to seeing the kids walking to school as I'm coming to work. Obviously, we've missed out on that for quite a while, so it'll be exciting this spring to see kids walking again, so. Um, so logistics, Kathy, um, will we come to your office, or how will we get, oh, you'll sign it for us?
Yeah, I will sign it on your behalf, and I, I will work with Kara to draft the letter, and you'll get a copy of it.
Okay, perfect. Is that satisfactory, commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, thank you, and good luck with, with that program and getting someone up and running. Look forward to it. Great. Okay, well, we'll continue on our discussion items. Building codes amendment, I think you may notice that Tyler's not with us today, so I think he is on call if we need him, but Kathy, are you gonna walk us through this one a little bit?
I certainly can give you the background. So when when we brought the program over, I, we know, we knew we needed backup for our program, and so we entered into an agreement with the state to do just that, and it was only a six-month agreement, and then at the end of the six months, we extended it for a year, and Tyler contacted them recently and said, you know, we'd like to keep this in place because the trades are difficult, you know, to backfill. There are a lot of opportunities there, so this is just an extension, there's very little changes in the amendment, except for the time extension.
Okay, um, seems like there's a limit on the amount to, like?
Yes, they capped it, they capped it at $25,000, and I think that was Tyler's request, so that, for budgetary
Okay.
iterations.
Okay. Um, questions, commissioners?
I have no questions. I, I would say that I think that the, the approach that we're taking to building codes has been working well. This is one component of it, obviously, working with Hood River County, kind of in collaboration, so as part of it, I, I, I support extending this, and I think it's nice to have, this is, of course, something that we have in our pocket if we need it. We don't necessarily always have to need it, maybe we won't spend up to $25,000, but it's just a good thing to have, so I think it's great.
Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, I was thinking he was gonna go ahead and move to approve IGA 90G 000359 Amendment 2, extending Cooperative Building Code Services with the State Building Codes Division through March 1 of 2027.
I will second that wonderful motion.
Okay, any further discussion, gentlemen? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And Chair votes aye, thank you. Okay, our next item is kind of a nice thing that we like to do, I can't get it up here. We have been asked by the Red Cross to proclaim some, something around the Red Cross duties, and I, I would ask if one of the commissioners would like to read the proclamation, and if not, I'm happy to do so. I think we should read it into the record.
I could read some of it.
You can't read all of it?
You can all of it too. You might get bored, it's, it's, uh, all right, I'll, I'll start, and if I, if I wanna pass it to one of you, I'll say pass to one of you, and then you have to pick up from there, okay?
Yeah, okay, then, then we, we need to be on attention, so here we go, all right.
All right. American Red Cross Month 2022, a proclamation. "In times of crisis, people in Wasco County come together to care for one another. This humanitarian support spirit is part of the foundation of our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross Cascades Region volunteers and donors. In 1881, Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication for helping others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers here in Wasco County who continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. They join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital lifes, life-saving preservation skills through the Red Cross. In the Cascade Regions, serving Oregon and Southwest Washington, the contributions of more than 2,500 local Red Cross volunteers give hope to the most vulnerable in their darkest hours. The Red Cross does so by providing more than 1,600 emergency overnight shelter stays, along with the food and comfort for families devastated by more than 6,800 local disasters like home fires. Through the generosity of those donated more than 182,000 units of essential blood for accident and burn victims, heart surgery and organ transplant page, patients, and those receiving treatment for leukemia, cancer, or sickle cell disease, or by supporting or by supporting service members and veterans on an average of eight times a day, along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, and by helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR, and other skills, or by delivering international humanitarian aid. Their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience. Dedicate this month of March to all those who can, who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who live by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it. We ask others to join this commitment and give back to our community. Now, therefore, the Wasco County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Red Cross Month and encourage all citizens of Wasco County to reach out and support its humanitarian, human, I cannot say that word.
Humanitarian.
Humanitarian mission. There you go, other than that one word that I couldn't seem to pronounce.
Great job, Scott, thank you, thank you. I think it is a wonderful organization. It's, it, it seems like it's one of those that are behind the scenes, not out front, so I'm really very proud to make this proclamation today. I know for a fact, when we have disasters here in Wasco County, we do get emails from the Red Cross letting us know that they're here and, and what they're doing to support our citizens, so they are here working locally, and we do have, as the proclamation states, many volunteers that volunteer for the American Red Cross. They're, they're, like I said, in the background, if there's a house fire, for instance, volunteers here are motive, are activated to help the family, you know, relocate and, and get what they need to maintain until they can get back in their home, so very, very proud to be able to proclaim this as American Red Cross Month. So Steve, did you have any comments, or?
Nope, hard to follow up on that, thank you.
Sorry.
You can pronounce the word I can't pronounce.
I know, there's some things I get a little passionate about, so this is one of those, so, all right.
I would, I would move to proclaim March 2022 as American Red Cross Month throughout Wasco County.
Thank you, sir, and I'll second your motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, great. Um.
I would move to approve the consent agenda for today, which includes minutes from February 16th, 2022.
Second motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Great. Okay, at this time, I'd like to entertain any members of the public who would like to speak to the commissioners about any subject. So please unmute yourself or pop on camera and have a go at us. Well, as always, we really appreciate members of the public tuning in, as well as the media, really appreciate your interest. And I'm not seeing that anybody wants to pop in today. Obviously, we have a very brief agenda. We usually have a lot more people, especially when we're doing COVID reports, but all right, I'll go ahead and close that public comment, thank you, and we'll move to our, hopefully, our only item of business today, which is the Smoke Mitigation Grant Agreement and Intergovernmental Agreement. So who's going to lead us? Is Lauren, are you going to lead us in this to start with?
I'm happy to provide further explanation and get us going. We also have DEQ available to answer questions if that is needed. So, uh, thank you for having me back. It's good to see all of you. I am here again to present now an intergovernmental agreement that will allow Wasco County Extension Service to help support the development of community response plans for smoke. We applied for this grant in December and were awarded the grant in January. The grant, as your memo indicates, stipulates that the funds must be received by a county or city government, and so since we have a great working relationship between Extension and Wasco County, where funds are regularly moved around for our work to support the work of the county, we thought that would be a great place to initiate this effort. As the grant also indicates, there'll be a number of opportunities for Wasco County staff to be involved at their discretion and desire, particularly emergency managers and other folks who may find interest and need to be a part of the Community Response Plan Development. We're also working closely with Public Health and other social service providers to develop the plans. And one of our goals at the end of the exercise, probably about a year from now, if things are working as they should be, we'll have a tabletop exercise where we can actually practice these communication strategies and deploy them in a mock smoke inundation event or kind of a disaster scenario that will be able to have everybody around the table together, hopefully in real life, together at a table where we can practice these efforts and strategies we've designed through the Community Response Plan. Are there specific questions you have, or what's the best next steps for me to explain?
Uh, go ahead, commissioners?
I didn't really have any specific questions. I, I didn't have any specific questions.
Thank you, Chair. Um, that's, I'm surprised, Commissioner Heggie. So since we're, um, we're producing an IGA, I'm gonna ask, um, Counselor Campbell to weigh in to make sure that we're all dotted and crossed, please.
Yeah, we can't hear you. You, doesn't look like you're muted, but we can't hear you.
I, I heard her.
Oh, you did?
Kristin, yeah, I can hear her. Kristin, say something, please. Now I'm, now I'm not hearing her. Still nothing. Okay.
She, it sounds like she's gonna call in, so, hand signals.
Yeah, otherwise, Madam Chair, I think this is, um, um, fine program, and we need to be ready, so, um, I think we may, need to move forward with this.
All right, yeah, thank you, Lauren. I really, I really appreciate you for pursuing this grant and being willing to implement this work for our citizens. We've certainly had some very catastrophic smoke events here, and I expect we'll have more. Yeah, so thank you, this will help us be better prepared, for sure.
Thank you. I will just note, uh, that we received three grants, we applied for three and have received all three, so that will help us to have a really holistic approach in responding to smoke, as we move forward with all three proposals.
Great, thank you. Okay, Kristin, can you unmute now and?
I apologize, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I, I wanted, I worked extensively with Lauren and DEQ. I really appreciate the collaborative efforts on this on this project, and I'm, I'm happy with the result, and from a legal standpoint, I have no concerns.
Okay, thank you. I knew that, but I wanted my two commissioners to hear that. Thank you, Kristin.
Sure.
So, um, so if there's no other questions or comments, I'll move. I'll move to approve DEQ Smoke Management Community Planning Grant Agreement Number 046-22, and the IGA between Wasco County and OSU Extension Services for implementation of said grant.
I'll second the motion.
Any further comments?
I said, I did, I thought of a question for Lauren. So it says in here, it says that the, the recipient agrees to complete the project no later than March 31st, 2023. So that's actually a fairly short window, think, I'm thinking it's a short window. Is all this work actually going, going to be completed within that timeframe? And kind of what happens after that period of time in terms of the community and dealing with it? I mean, I'm assuming these monitors are still gonna be around, but is somebody gonna be watching those and reporting, or what's happening?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the first grant from OHSU is $10,000 to fund installation of 10 new monitors. Those will be going up initially at orchards across Hood River and Wasco Counties, five in each county. We are then looking for some additional external funding to put them at all of our local schools to provide information for student health and wellbeing. This $80,000 specifically from DEQ for the Community Response Plan is to draft a plan, and as I looked at other communities' plans, those ranged from 10 to 40 pages of planning and design that were outlining what a community would do. Sometimes it's down to the level of detail of who pushes the button to send the Everbridge alert. Um, my hope is that these sensors will eventually be able to communicate, uh, either through a person or directly to Everbridge, so that let's say farm workers in a specific part of our county or region are being affected by smoke. We know there's tons of microclimates in the gorge, so hopefully they would get a notice on their cellphone to either don PPE or go indoors if they could. Similarly, similarly, for our school kids, a principal might then be able to make a decision about indoor recess versus outdoor recess or after-school programming. So the plan itself, I'm very confident we'll be able to write over the course of the next year. I'll be working, hopefully, with an AmeriCorps Vista intern for a full year as well, that should overlap with the majority of that time, so they'll be really helpful, and I'm planning to spend a good deal, probably a quarter of my FTE on this project over the next year, so I think we'll be in good shape. I, I agree, it's a tight timeline, but I think in terms of gathering partners, as we were meeting with folks in advance of submitting the grant, there was so much interest and agreement that it was definitely a need, so I think it should be good. I'm hopeful, and I'm, I'm confident it will be complete within a year. In terms of the mitigation strategies, that's definitely a longer-term process that we'll be looking at alternatives to burning, like chipping orchard waste and forest slash instead of burning it. This gets a bit out of my wheelhouse pretty quickly, but there's a technology called air curtain incinerators that change the amount of smoke produced when burning happens and creates biomass instead of as much smoke. Um, there may be opportunities for homeowners to have free drop-off days for compost, like a dirt hugger or something, uh, rather than having to burn their own yard debris, so those strategies will be immediate, but also long-term behavior change that will encourage our communities to adopt over time with support and funding and modeling and encouragement.
Great stuff, thank you, Lauren.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I just have one question too, Lauren. Um, just as you were talking, you mentioned PPE and personal protective equipment, and it seems like we're just been responding to one disaster after another, and, you know, when we had the really bad smoke a couple, a few years ago, there's one level of PPE, and then we've switched to a pandemic, which we're all familiar with now, N95 masks and things like that, but I know in my household, you know, we made that switch pretty quick. Now, I don't even, I don't even remember what we need going forward for, uh, you know, and the summer is just around the corner, so, um, is that gonna be part of the work, is helping the community get ready for, you know, what we need in our homes to respond quickly?
Absolutely, yeah, that will be a key part of the communication and education. So you're right about the PPE, the respirators are recommended, KN and N95 respirator masks, not the fabric masks, the PM. the PM 2.5 particulates. Go right through that fabric. Other things that we've all recognized over the last several years, especially in the Labor Day fires, is that as soon as the smoke arrives, air purifiers and filters and all of the things that you might want are out from all the local stores. So we're going to be encouraging people to access those. And then DEQ has some other funding, along with the Oregon Health Authority, to support low-income families and accessing those types of protective materials for their homes. Everything from ceiling doors and windows better to providing those filters or air quality improvement protective measures. And our office just received, I think, 10,000 masks that are going to be rated for smoke, which was timely in the mask mandate being removed, but we'll have them now for smoke and fire in the summertime.
Great, great. Okay, so don't toss those N95s, right?
Hold on to them, put them in your disaster kit.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, I believe we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion?
I don't, have we made a motion?
Didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought so.
Oh, okay.
I did, and you seconded it.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Short to memory.
Okay, uh, I'll call for the vote then. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you doing this work.
You, I appreciate the, uh, work with you all as well. Thanks.
Okay, great. Okay, I think we'll move on to commission call now. Seriously, is this the shortest meeting? Okay, we're not done yet, but, um, okay, commissioners, would you like to tell us what you've been up to? Or this is your time?
I have a question. It's more of a question than, than a comment. So our next meeting is the 16th, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, and so are we anticipating that to be in-person? Or what are, what is our expectation going into that? Part of the reason I ask is because I may not be back in town at that point in time, and I may be connecting electronically.
Yeah, I think, um, I think that's up to us. We had a couple of weeks ago talked about moving in April to in-person meetings. We can stay on that, uh, calendar, or we can, we can go into in-person on the 16th. But I do believe that we are planning a hybrid model whenever we go. So if you're not in town, you can certainly connect by computer. But I think that's our decision. Tyler's not here. Kathy, do you have, do you know if Tyler, have you discussed this with Tyler at all?
Have not. We have a staff meeting this afternoon, but, um, just because the board had decided at the last meeting that April 1st would be the kind of starting point for in-person meetings. That's, that's the way I've managed it.
Okay. And I think for those, I'm, that, in the audience, I'm sure everyone knows, but you, you never know that the mask mandate's been lifted as of March 12th now, I believe. It's hard to keep track of those moving dates. And so our next meeting is on the 16th. So what's the will? What would, I, I think maybe we should defer to staff, Scott, and, and see what works for them, because they're gonna have to set up everything for that hybrid. And, um, and then we can, we can let, um, we can let each other know and, and at that time when. Do you have a preference, Steve?
Yeah, 302 still should be set up, and, um, I don't think that that's an issue. And I think that, um, uh, hybrid is the wave of the future. And, um, I believe that we should, uh, keep that scenario alive.
Yeah, for me, I'm, I think, um, as long as staff can make it all happen by the 16th, I'm happy with going back in person on the 16th without a mask, which will be very, very nice to see each other's faces and, yeah, so.
And I think that. Okay, and I'm fine with that, no problem. Um, and I think if I'm correct, we, we're actually, there is a law now requiring us to make our public meetings available in this manner, I think. Is that correct?
I didn't know that.
There is, yes, there's a law that took effect in January that requires, when reasonable, that public bodies, when they have their meetings, offer a option to join remotely. That can be as simple as a phone or, uh, or a Zoom platform that, that we have.
Wow, great. Um, and, and we've done it, right? So we did it, um, late last spring or early summer, and it worked beautifully. So, um, we're set up and ready to go, uh, hopefully. So we'll defer to staff and FYI, let you know. How's that?
That's fine. Is it, so last time we talked, actually, just at our last meeting, we talked about the idea of, is 302 the best room to meet in? And is there a better, uh, room to meet in? And I'm thinking from a technology standpoint, we probably don't want to be moving on out of there, because I know our staff has kind of set that up and, uh, and spent some resource to get that there. But, you know, I think kind of longer term, um, you know, is that the best place to meet going forward? I don't know. We've met there for many, 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 many years, uh, and it's fine. But, you know, it'd be nice if we had a more open room somewhere. But I don't know of one.
Yeah, I think this has come up before. I actually brought it up, um, with Tyler recently. You know, just if there was a, you know, that room is so small and so cramped. And if it gets full, it's not going to be comfortable for people, you know, um, I don't think. And so there, there doesn't seem to be a, an alternative at this point in time. Uh, I don't know, Kathy, you want to weigh in?
So there probably are alternatives. They would have costs attached. You know, we could, uh, talk to the college about, uh, reserving space there on a regular basis or at the readiness center. I don't know how the PUD would feel about us using their meeting room, uh, in the mornings twice a month. So there are certainly alternatives, but they would have a cost attached to them.
Plus, you'd have to move the technology, I suppose.
Well, not necessarily. I imagine that the PUD is probably already set up for that. I know the college has space that's set up for, uh, Zoom meetings, and I would assume the readiness center does as well. But, um, all of those would have rental costs associated with them.
I'm wondering if we could just, maybe just explore that just a tiny bit. I don't want to spend a bunch of time doing it, but maybe if we could just look at what our options are and if there's a cost and how much that might be.
I'd be happy to do that for you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't spend a bunch of time, but if we could just at least know our options.
I would agree. Hmm, okay, anything else, commissioners?
I didn't have anything else. Other than I would say that, uh, Dell's High School is, uh, made it to the Oregon State Championships in ski racing, and it's gonna start, it actually starts today, but they'll be racing tomorrow and Friday. So very proud of them and excited to see what happens.
Good luck. Commissioner Kramer?
Yeah, just watching Salem, seeing, um, what's gonna come out. Things are, yeah, things are in second and third readings, and, um, so it's, um, gonna be interesting.
Yeah. Okay.
Sheila has a hand raised there, just FYI. Sheila Dooley.
Oh, uh, Sheila, did you have a public comment? You've missed our public comment period.
Oh, I just had a comment. It's okay, just on the, so the 16th, you know, that's the Wilson hearings. It'll be hybrid then, you're saying, on the 16th, the next meeting?
Yeah.
Make sure that, yeah. Yeah.
Yes, Sheila, uh, we're, we're still deferring to staff to make sure that, that everything is in order for the 16th. I think it probably will be a hybrid meeting, um, but, uh, to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
And, and just for the record, Sheila, so it will always have hybrid options. I think the question, well, on the 16th, is whether we're going to be in-person, so people could actually come in person as well as electronically. But will there be fully electronic? Or we'll have a hybrid? Either way, people that cannot be there will be able to join us, um, through other means.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
How about you, Kathy?
Well, I don't have anything. Yeah, I, I'll accept, is this the shortest meeting ever? Um, oh.
We've had, we've actually.
We're on like 10-minute meetings, people.
Really?
But regular, regular.
Not a regular session, not a regular session. Those are.
I think this is the shortest regular one.
All right. And I'm wondering if I had, if we had the longest day two weeks ago. So today, maybe we've made up for that.
Yeah, we had a long day two weeks ago. It wasn't the longest that we've had, but.
Okay. Well, with that, I think I'm gonna go ahead and, and close the meeting for today. And thank you, everyone, and, uh, we'll see you soon.